Thank you all for joining us for the April 16th, 2019 meeting of the Buncombe County Commission. Let's begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and join us in the pledge.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Intify the flag of the United States of America and as a republic from which it stands, one nation under God and invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin our meeting this evening, let's take a moment to reflect on how fortunate we are for the service of our first responders. As we've seen the news and images of the fire in Paris, France, which caused great destruction to one of the oldest and most beautiful churches in the world, we are reminded of how much we owe to our first responders and firefighters. These are the people who dedicate themselves to the protection of lives and homes and communities. So before we begin our meeting, let's have a moment for silent prayer and appreciation for our firefighters and first responders here in Buncombe County and for all the good people who do this important work around the world. Please join me in a moment of silence. And before we begin the meeting, I'd like to ask everyone to please silence your cellphones or put them on mute or turn them off. I also want to announce that we have parking validation for any people who are attending the county commission meeting this evening. If you parked in the county's parking deck next door or used Asheville Transit to come to the meeting, you can get validation from one of the officers who are attending the meeting this evening on your way out. Let me read the ethics reminder to the board. In accordance with the code of ethics adopted by the board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda the outcome of which would have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any board member? Does any board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the board today? There being none, all board members have a duty and obligation to vote on any matters voted on by the board at this meeting. All right, we come to our agenda. We would like to have a motion to approve the consent agenda and to follow the remainder of the agenda as published with the addition of a presentation on rural broadband.
So moved.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, great. So we are starting off with good news, and I'm going to turn it over to Commissioners Al Whitesides and Amanda Edwards to present this item.
Commissioner Whitesides and I have the privilege of attending the Eagle Scout ceremony on April 6th for Elias. He is a senior at Spilsa National Security School. He's graduating in just a few months. And just before the meeting, he shared this really exciting news that he has just been accepted to the National Security Language Initiative.
He's been accepted to the National Security Language Initiative through the State Department. He will be spending his gap year in South Korea. He spent a lot of time preparing for his Eagle Scout award. Less than 5% of Boy Scouts received this honor. The project that he chose to work towards was with HelpMate and helping victims and survivors of domestic abuse and violence in their homes. So with that said, on behalf of the citizens of Buncombe County, this board does hereby express its sincere appreciation for the dedication and determination that it took for you to achieve this honor in Boy Scouts. We wish you continued success, confident that this achievement has prepared you for a very successful journey. The time that we got to spend with Elias and listening to the letters of support and the number of friends and family that he has, he's going to do really amazing things in this world, and I'm proud to recognize you and to know you. Thank you so much.
Great, great job, Elias. We're proud of you. And I was in the Scouts, and I think I made it to Tenderfoot? I think that's what the thing they called it, and no further. So you went way, way beyond where I did in my scouting endeavors. I loved it though. I loved going camping, and the Scouts are a great organization. But that's an amazing accomplishment, so great job. All right, we added the rural broadband presentation. I guess we didn't say exactly when we were going to fit that in. Do we want to go ahead and do that now, or do we want to go ahead and do the legal settlement? Let's do the presentation, and then we'll do the closed session after that. So we have Sarah Nichols with us from the Land of Sky Regional Council, and she'll talk to us a little bit about some of the efforts to identify the opportunities for expanded affordable rural broadband in Buncombe County.
Thank you for inviting me tonight to talk about the West Engine Project, and I commend you for taking an interest into broadband concerns for the county. I want to note, this is not just for rural broadband, this is broadband for all.
Thank you.
Internet access was once a luxury item, but is now considered a basic utility for many activities. We feel when you invest in broadband, you invest in education, public safety, healthcare, economic development, quality of life, and your people. Land of Sky's been working on the West Engine Project for about four years. Broadband surfaced as a concern at our last SEDS plan and started as a group of leaders wanting to improve options in the area. They followed a model that had worked in other part of the state to leverage public-private partnership to deploy broadband and teamed our region's most population-dense areas to help attract a new provider. We are continuing to work with that provider to remove barriers of deployment, meanwhile focusing energy on Phase Two. With the help of an ARC grant, we are doing some high-level broadband planning. We're following the North Carolina broadband playbook to show local leaders like you and providers where Buncombe County stands. This includes vertical assets, such as cell towers or tall buildings, anything that's kind of taller than anything else, has a fiber backbone and power run to it could be used to leverage additional support for the community, as well as community assets such as fire departments, community centers, or libraries. We currently have these towers the county owns mapped and are continuing to build the layers. Ultimately, we'll use this information to help leverage more service for the community. I have a few goals with the demand aggregation. If you don't have service, can we get you something? And if you have something, does it need to be better? I call it the Internet for All Project. We've been at this for a little while now and have been working with some of the partners to help get quality data. So far, we have about 900 survey responses from Buncombe County. For this information to be of value to the providers and the planners, more data is critical, but I'd like to show you what we've been finding so far. In this map, people responding -- they're responding to a question that says basically yes or no, do I have service? Overwhelmingly, people in Buncombe County seem to have something, and the people who are saying they don't have access are in areas where it appears something may exist and they have some other barriers, such as cost or lack of interest. However, in this map, we're showing a lot of people countywide that feel their service is not meeting their needs. What you'll notice also is that there's areas of the counties not very well represented, and that data in more rural areas of the county, so much higher concentrations of dissatisfaction. This amounts to about 46% of the Buncombe County population saying they feel their provider isn't meeting their needs, and 8% saying they don't have anything at all. Our plan is to take this data to show where business opportunities are for new providers, where are the concerns for existing providers, and ultimately identify areas with data that are likely to remain unserved or underserved, and thus may be a space for some public ingenuity. In order to get a diverse response with particular interest to those on the other side of the digital divide, I've created a deployment plan that will take reaching out to our community partners on all sides. We've been working with many of these entities already, and I'm optimistic that together we can reach our deployment goals. My plan is to focus the energy over the next couple of weeks and then start working with our staff, county staff, to process the data, fill gaps, and create a deployment plan for the county that's representative of the current concerns. We'll then be prepared to host a provider meeting to share the data, and hopefully over time enjoy improved connectivity countywide.
I guess just, you know, it'll be great when this assessment is finished, we have more data. So we would definitely like to follow up once we have that to kind of have a further discussion about what, you know, what are some of the best opportunities and what can local government do to really help advance this effort? Obviously, it's something that is of, you know, this is a kind of infrastructure that is just so important to people's just day-to-day ability to work and communicate, and I think we've all been impressed by how the project that we supported in Sandy mush, which was to bring internet access to the community center there, how much that has helped at that one spot, but it's just one spot. So I think we're trying to really identify what are the opportunities that we can help move this process forward faster than it would otherwise. We know that this is probably going to improve naturally over time as the different companies want to do more business, but we'd like to see it happen sooner rather than later. So anything you'd like to share with us now, or should we just encourage folks to participate in the survey and then schedule another time to talk once we have more data?
I think that's the key, Chairman, is that what we need is for people, especially people who don't have access or have poor access, to get their data into this, and then we're going to play with it over the next few weeks and see where those opportunities are.
Great. All right, well, we encourage everyone to participate in this, if you have great access or no access or need better access. Everyone, share your information, and it'll help us figure out where the next steps are. So Commissioners, any other questions at this time? All right, thank you so much. Okay, let's, we do need to have a, what I think will be a pretty brief closed session to consult with Ron Payne about the legal settlement item that we'll be discussing in a few minutes. Heather, what do we need to say? What are the words we need to say?
You need a motion to go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A3 to discuss with your retained legal counsel the matter of County of Buncombe versus Wanda Skellington Green, I'm sorry, Wanda Skellington Green, Amanda Louise Stone, John Creighton, Joe Wiseman, as shown in 18 CVS 4206.
Thank you. All right, that's a motion from Commissioner Fryer.
I'll second.
And seconded by Commissioner Whitesides. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned, we'll be back in a moment.
I want to do that. I just have you sign what I need. I was messing with you. I have you sign what you sign for him tomorrow. Okay, thank you.
I moved that so y'all could see.
Thank you.
That was good work.
Yeah, I'm the one that straightens out the pictures at the house.
Did you see Max fixed the clock?
Same clock.
Clock's working?
I was trying to get a new clock. I was trying to get a new clock.
Is that what that was?
Max fixed it.
I actually messed with the nails, so I was trying to get a new clock.
It's like you staged it a couple of weeks ago.
A little color on it, like kitchen clocks.
Okay, is there a motion to go back into open session?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Oh, sure.
All right, Ron Payne, thank you for being with us this evening and you've got some updates to share with us on a couple of legal matters.
I do. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, this evening I would ask that the board approve a resolution of a civil matter involving Amanda Stone. She has agreed, and I have an official check payable to Buncombe County in the amount of $171,241. If the, in exchange for this, she would be receiving a limited release that would only release her for the claims of which we're currently aware, which are itemized in the release to be executed by the chairman and half the board should you approve it. That would bring the total amounts that we have recovered on behalf of the county to something over $3238,000. And I would ask that the board approve that. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer those.
Is there a motion?
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second to accept this limited settlement as just described by Mr. Payne. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And was there another matter?
There is. This will take a little bit longer, but you'll recall when these matters first started, one of the first things we looked into was whether or not there was insurance coverage to cover any of these acts. There was one policy, but it had a cap of $250,000. And it appeared to be a per employee cap for certain people. Some of the items that we have been reimbursed for, I'm not sure would have fallen under the definition of theft contained in that policy. We filed the claims, but asked the insurance company to hold off because obviously the county was out more money than that, and we've recovered more money than that. The policy itself did not provide for the cost of recovery, including legal fees, except in one circumstance. And that was where if an employee had forged a check here payable to a third party, and the third party sued the county and the county had dishonored the check, it would pay for the defense of that claim. In other words, the county defending itself or someone is trying to collect on a forged check. But in conversations with counsel in Chicago for the insurance carrier, I told them, I said, "I feel like you ought to encourage your insureds to be aggressive and pursue these matters rather than just submitting claims and you writing bigger checks." The companies didn't agree. So in response, I had submitted to them all of our billings that our firm has submitted to the county and the time that we had not billed for, I believe up through about the middle of March, somewhere around there. The company has agreed to reimburse the county every penny of that money, which totaled $82,492.38. In exchange for that, there will be a release that they were required to be executed. They will release them from any further claims insofar as these matters are concerned. We will still have the pending lawsuit against Joe Wiseman, but Joe Wiseman and his company, that were by no means employees of Buncombe County, so we could not have made any claim concerning that matter. But I would recommend that we accept, the county rather, accept the $82,492.38, which would, as far as I know, make the county whole as far as legal fees expended in the recovery of the sums from Wanda Green, Michael Green, John Creighton, and Amanda Stone.
All right, are there any questions from the commission? Is there a motion to accept the recommendation for payment to recoup the county's legal costs on this matter?
As so move.
And I apologize, I did not take public comment on the last motion, which we customarily do. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Is there anything, any other updates, Mr. Payne?
Not at this time, necessarily.
All right, well, we greatly appreciate your work on this. You've done a great job, and the taxpayers of the county really appreciate all your efforts and the great progress you've made working for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is under new business, consideration of financing documents for the Eagle Marketplace project. And Mike Frew will present this item.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, Mountain Housing Eagle Market Project has been ongoing for years. It's had a failure of a structural slab and refinance and reconfiguration of the amounts of affordable workforce housing. At this time, what is happening is that TD Bank did the construction loans, and now this is moving to Freddie Mac, officially Federal Home Loan Mortgage Corporation for permanent financing. This is, there's no new money here. There's no new ask. In fact, the only ask are coming from the requirements of Freddie Mac that they get into first lien position. County through some paperwork here is staying in the same positions on the commercial aspects of the development and the residential. So if you're looking at the numbers, I did want to point out that it sort of looks like from what the county's signing here that $500,000 is missing. But that's because the residential portion of the building is for one and a half million for permanent financing. The commercial aspect is for 500,000. So that entity, which is EMP Marketplace or EMP Commercial, will be signing a note for that. And the city of Asheville and MHO will be subordinating to the county, so the county stays in second position on that loan. So this is two subordination agreements and two modification agreements, and I would recommend the board approve this. And we got some folks from MHO here, if you have any questions for them in particular.
I'm sorry.
Just a process question. Can we approve these together as a package?
Yes, yes, sir.
I have a question. What is unit 100 in the?
Is that the commercial? Commercial.
A half a million?
Yes, yes, sir. For the declaration of condominium, just to make it easy, there's.
62 residential units?
And so they just call them unit 200 collectively, and unit 100 is the commercial.
So is that like the retail and the commercial, that's the commercial part of it?
Yes.
All right, if there's no other questions?
One more.
Oh, yeah, please, go ahead.
How far back are we on the list if they didn't pay Fannie Mac, Fannie Mae, as far as the two million?
On the commercial space, county's number two. On the residential space, the county's number four and number six. And that doesn't change from today. That's where it was, or where it is now.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the loan modifications and subordination agreements?
So move.
Second.
Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Frew. All right. We now come to a couple of different matters related to policies around disposal of surplus county property. And Pamela Freeman King from General Services will help us get started on this.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, county staff have been working to refine its practices regarding the disposal of surplus property. Tonight, we have four resolutions to present, and I will be presenting them individually for consideration. The first resolution is requesting approval to update our surplus property disposal policy to include allowing qualified 501(c) nonprofit, nonprofits located in Buncombe County the first opportunity to purchase such property at fair market value. Fair market value will be established by the finance director, taking into account such information as past auction selling process on gov deals, Kelly Blue Book value if vehicles are included, and current condition of items. Any items not purchased by qualified nonprofits would then be placed for electronic auction. We ask for approval of the resolution as presented.
Okay. And now the next item that's on the list is this Exhibit A, which is, but we could approve the policy and then the exhibit is sort of a separate.
You're on the second, you're on the second one. Yeah, we're just on the resolution approving, the first bullet, resolution approving surplus property, just properly, property disposal policy. That's the resolution we're approving.
Agreed. And we're not, we're not approving the Exhibit A yet, but the Exhibit A if approved is an exhibit to that, to the policy? Does that mean thinking about that the right way?
No, you're one ahead.
Well, Mr. Chairman, there is a policy attached to the first resolution. That's the procurement manual that the board approved in November, and the section that deals with surplus property is section seven. So this just modifies that policy to the extent of this new resolution.
All right. All right, any questions or discussion?
Well, I'd just like to ask where this, where this come from, comes from. One of the things that I do like about it is that, one, it's fair market value. The other is, you know, a lot of times people will go on and seek out these to, you know, buy and resell and so on and so on. If it could be used, if it could be used within the, within the county and would probably, you know, I think indirectly probably save us some money, possibly as a government having to maybe help or supply. But where did this conversation come from to change it in the procurement policy? Where did all this start?
Can I make one comment on that, and then staff could chime in too? So I think some of it may have come from me. One of the, you know, one of the items that we'll talk about in a minute is related to the consideration of donations to Working Wheels, which is a nonprofit organization in the community that basically works to help folks in the community who need to get a working car at an affordable price to be able to kind of help them do that. And, you know, we'd had, been having discussions about some of the older fleet replacement and how many older cars, you know, the county goes through. And it's not, you know, an insignificant number. And so the process with Working Wheels is that most of their vehicles are donated by, you know, businesses or individuals. And so it made me think, well, you know, certainly selling the vehicles makes a lot of sense, get money to help buy new vehicles. But in some, for some of these vehicles where maybe the resale value is, is really quite low, so we're not going to make much money from it, maybe actually partnering with Working Wheels to help get those vehicles to a family in Buncombe County that really needs an affordable vehicle, you know, maybe that's something we should take a, take a look at. So we'll hear a presentation about that organization in a minute to kind of, you know, have some discussion around that. So I, that thought process kind of prompted me to talk to Avril a little bit about, you know, what policies do we have in place, things like that. So some of it may have come from here, but there may have been other stuff going on with the staff as well. So Ms. Pender, do you have any comments on that?
Yes, and as you mentioned, some came from you, but other commissioners had also approached staff about donating items. And we looked at a broader conversation about if nonprofits are looking for items, how can we help our local nonprofits in Buncombe County to address that need? But instead of donating everything or giving everything away, we thought if we could establish a fair market value at a staff level and work it that way, nonprofits could send a letter to us, or they can, when we bring these items to the commissioners as surplus, we would also publish that list, that nonprofits then income, and first comes first serve basis, and get items that they could use in their organizations to help serve the citizens of Buncombe County first. After that, then we can put them on gov deals and sell them as an auction where the price could be bid up, and we can get a return on our investment. So the idea came from just looking at what we could do to help our nonprofits locally without having to pick and choose a nonprofit, but kind of level the playing field a little bit. That was where that idea started. So the ask tonight would be, in this policy, allow us to let nonprofits come in and choose the items that they want, pay the fair market value, so we are recouping some of our investment, and then the rest we could sell on the internet.
Thank you. I wonder if, before we start voting on these individually, I wonder if we should just kind of talk about each one so we sort of understand all the different pieces that are here, get all the information, and then, because some of these we might be ready to vote on tonight, others maybe we want to take some more time and think it through. So why don't we kind of touch on each one, and then we'll decide which ones we want to act on this evening? All right, let's talk about the next item.
So the second resolution is requesting approval of the items listed in Exhibit A to be declared a surplus property and to be disposed of according to the county's surplus property disposal policy. Exhibit A includes nine vehicles being declared surplus due to mileage and years of service, and three lots of computer monitors and laptops that have surpassed life expectancy and are at the end of life.
Any questions about that item? All right, and then.
I do have a question. Okay, so how is the list generated? How will future lists be generated? Is this just what's available right now, or, I mean, how's this, how was this list developed?
You're correct. This is what's available right now. That's, that the departments have turned in as surplus. Our plan going forward is as departments turn in surplus, you will see this at least twice a year. That way we can clean out our inventory and get them back either sold or in the hands of nonprofits. But this is something we want to do every six months, so we would not have a backlog of items sitting waiting to be disposed of.
Okay, so that was going to be my next question. So we expect to deal with this every six months or every quarter or whatever, right?
Yes, sir.
And so that list will be prepared, and then nonprofits will be notified, or how is that going to work?
The list will be prepared, and you will have to first declare it as surplus. So we will bring it to you, you will declare it as surplus. We'll give nonprofit, we'll advertise and give them six, 10 days for nonprofits to come and select any items, pay the, pay the fair market value. Before it does that, we will have the departments look through the items. If they can use it within the county, that's what we will do. If they can't use it, they'll be declared surplus. We will bring that to you. You would pass the resolution to clear net surplus. We would then list it locally for nonprofits. Nonprofits can come and they can bid on the items. Well, they can purchase the items at fair market value. After that, they would go on the internet and be sold on gov deals, which will be a bidding process.
Okay.
But our goal will be to have a routine in place where every six months we would clean out, and we'll not have a backlog of inventory sitting around.
So is the six months or the time necessary to have in the policy or not?
Not. It will be based on what's surplus.
Based on the list?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. I'm not for this because I am a car dealer, and I have gone on Asheville and Buncombe County looking at vehicles and bidding on them. And you get outbid. Nonprofits, you know, it's, I'm not a nonprofit, so I can't get anything for free. And trying to do a market value of a vehicle is not exactly going to be the easiest thing to do. Plus, we are asking the staff to spend more time looking at this instead of just putting it on gov code, letting the people bid, and it go away. The one thing that I want to do, that I've been trying to do, is make sure that, you know, we've got a couple of fire departments that need a couple of vehicles. And that I want to, because that's in the life-saving department. It's not in the freebie department that, you know, that we're looking at. Anybody, I guess, the 501(c)(3) is, or one or whatever, is, is in that area. I have looked at the lot down here where the gentleman has his cars, and he has a whole lot of cars down there, but they're all on one side. There's not a whole lot there to work with that he can fix to give to a family or even sell to a family. So, but there is a Durango tied into that deal that Rod Driver's been looking for a car for ever, fire department. And I told him. And I told him we had a Durango family, and they would like to have it because it's bigger, because they've got two full-time people, and they've got 26 people that are, that basically just come and help fight fires. But they have to send them to classes, and they're having to use a bigger truck from the fire department, or use their own vehicles to be able to go to these classes. So, whatever we do in this process, this Durango, we need to pull it back out, because I don't think poor people can afford a Hemi Durango four-wheel drive if they can't afford to go buy a car. So, it, but I am not for changing this, because there's nonprofits. That's not, I'm not a nonprofit. I don't mind going online and bidding against people. And I don't, I think we sell these vehicles quicker than six months. If we pile them up down there for six months at the staging area, I think we're going to have a whole lot more vehicles in 10 or 12. So, you know, Mike, and he's in the room back here, he's done a good job of moving these vehicles for us, not just to add to computers and anything else that we have to sell. He puts online, and he sells it, and he does a good job. So, that's just one person. Now, we're going to tie more people up waiting 10 days for other people to come in and make a bid, or outbid the person beforehand. So, it, I think this is a bad ruling. You can vote for it if you want to, but I can't see changing the stuff. I can see, you know, we don't need to be giving away $30,000 worth of vehicles because we can. That's not what we should be doing. And we, you know, let's help the people, you know. I want these two fire departments, one's getting a vehicle already, then we need to post the other one for 10 days so that it can be, you know, delivered to the other fire department that's been waiting since three years. They've been waiting for something. So, I am, I will not be for voting on any of this, because it's going to take more of her time and the people in the department down there to be able to try to keep up with this, which we have one person, once they call and tell them he's got something for sale, he puts it online, and he sells it. And that's, you know, why are we going to make more work for the people in Buncombe County just because of a nonprofit or commissioners? You know, because that's what they think something needs to be done.
All right. Thanks. Any other comments on the, or questions about the Exhibit A? All right. And now, I'm going to discuss the French Broad Resolution.
The third resolution is requesting approval to donate county vehicle number 1978, a 2008 Ford Explorer, to French Broad Volunteer Fire and Rescue. Request for donation has been received from Fire Chief Matthew Shelton to assist in first response operations. This vehicle donation was posted at least five days prior to today's meeting, as required by General Statute 160A-280.
Thank you. And any questions about this one? All right. And then, the resolution on the Working Wheels.
I do have a comment on it. Okay. So, we can vote for this and donate this, and there's no change in policy whatsoever, right? This can be pulled out, and we can do that, okay?
That's a separate resolution.
We can, okay. Someone will make a motion, and we approve that.
Let's, let's, let's finish doing each one of them, and then we'll...
Yeah, it's fine, it's fine, because that's what you, that's what you had said earlier, and I agree to it. That's fine. Go ahead.
All right.
The fourth resolution is requesting approval to donate five vehicles declared a surplus property to Working Wheels, a local nonprofit corporation. The vehicles include a 2011 Ford Crown Vic, 2006 Ford Escape, 2008 Dodge Durango, 2008 Ford Escape, 2006 Ford E150 Van. This donation was posted at least five days prior to today's meeting, as required by General Statute 160A-280.
All right. Thank you. And I believe there is a representative from Working Wheels here who can do a short presentation about what they do, so we can kind of have some more information about what this, what this would look like. Hi.
Hi. My name is Lara Lustig, and I'm the Marketing and Administrative Coordinator for Working Wheels. And I think we have a little presentation.
Yes. Is the...
What? Okay.
Didn't, wasn't their presentation sent in to be prepped on this? I thought there was. I don't know if I have it. You don't have it?
I have a printed-out copy.
You've got a printed-out copy? Okay. Well, we might just, maybe you could just, I think you're just going to have to talk to us. I'm sorry that the presentation isn't loaded up that you prepared, obviously.
Totally fine.
All right.
So, at Working Wheels, we are a nonprofit organization up in Woodfin. We repair and recycle donated cars, transforming them into working wheels for working families. Our model is simple, it's collaborative, and it's effective. It's simple because it's a really natural joining of forces. We solicit car donations from the community. We assess the best use for each car, and we repair those that we are able to for the vehicle program. It is a collaborative model. Program participants are chosen by the case managers at our 14 local partner organizations. That includes Justice Resource Center, Nurse Family Partnership, Habitat for Humanity, HelpMate, HUDVash, Homeward Bound, GO, just to name a few. The case managers from those organizations choose the folks who apply for our program because they have the best sense of who will benefit the most from, from the vehicles in the program. We are doubling down on the work of local agencies that are already doing excellent work in our community. And we get these cars to Buncombe County residents who need them to get to work, to take their children to appointments, to increase their work hours, and to increase their responsibilities at work, which often increases their income. We also work with seven partner mechanic shops who offer us discounted labor on car repairs, and as well, we repair some vehicles in our own shop up in Woodfin. We do get half-priced parts from Advance and from Carquest, and our partner mechanics use parts that we get at half-price, so we don't have to pay an additional markup on parts from them. And we do get discounted tires donated from Michelin. Hey! There it is.
Thank you.
Awesome. Those are partner agencies. They're pretty great. Partner mechanics, also excellent. Okay. Here's our why. We are an effective organization. Fifty-six percent of our past program participants who were surveyed reported an improvement in their housing situation because they were able to move, often because they were able to move off the bus line to more affordable situation or a safer one. Seventy-four percent report an increase in their income, and 88 percent report an improvement in their quality of life. This is Angela. Before getting a car from Working Wheels, she would spend four hours a day riding the bus out to Black Mountain to the Ingalls Distribution Center where she worked, and then riding it back. The day that she got her car, she was able to increase her pay because she was able to increase her time at work, and at the same time, she was able to increase her time at home with her kiddos. So, it was an immediate improvement for her. And two and a half years later, her Honda minivan is still going. This is Amanda, came to us from the Buncombe County Reentry Council. Some of our reentry council clients are sort of the biggest heart warmers in our organization. They really come from tough situations, and they're working really hard to turn their lives around, and we're honored to be a part of that process. This is Tayla from the Nurse Family Partnership. And this is John from Homeward Bound. And a lot of times, transportation is that key to creating stability for a lot of the clients from our partner agencies. And so, we want to, our main focus right now is we want to scale this up. We want to scale our operation up so we can reach more people. As of December, we had helped 100 families in western North Carolina by providing them with reliable, affordable transportation. And the need is immense. We ask our partner agencies what their need looks like every year, and it's always beyond what we can meet. So, any improvement that we can make in our numbers, any increase is going to benefit the county and the area. And in order to do that, we need more cars. So, we're always looking for cars that are sort of in a sweet spot, where it's a car that maybe somebody who had it wouldn't want to put the amount of money in that it would take to make it reliable, but because we have support from a lot of grant funders, from faith organizations, and from local bank charities, bank foundations, we're able to put a little more into the car than maybe some, a private person would want to. Any questions?
You said you'd provided 100 cars. Over what period of time would that be?
So, we, we started in 2016 as a satellite office from Wheels for Hope, which is the organization in Raleigh. It's larger than we are, so they had a model in place that they had sort of pinned down over the couple of decades that they've been around. And in that first year, it started off very slowly. There weren't actually any employees yet. And so, it was a lot of volunteering until we got Jamie Beasley, our executive director, and we, we got Mike Campbell, our car flow manager, as a volunteer for a long time before he got hired. So, that first year, it was something like eight or nine cars. And then, the second year, it increased to in the 20s. This past year, we did 46 program cars. And we are just, we're just aiming to increase, to help the folks in our area who need it.
Okay, thanks.
Are these cars that we would, if we donate them to you, will they go to people in Buncombe County?
These cars, if the county donates the cars, they will go to people in Buncombe County. We, most of our partner agencies primarily work with Buncombe County residents. Part of our expansion plan in the future, in the next three years, is we'd like to stretch out deeper into western North Carolina, because that rural need is very, very deep. But as of now, they will go to Buncombe County residents.
Yeah, because the problem I would have with giving you the cars, they were paid for by the citizens of Buncombe County.
Absolutely.
And I would hate if we're going to give them away. I would want our people to get priority.
Absolutely. We'll make that commitment, that the cars will go to Buncombe County residents.
Laura, I have a question.
Yeah.
So, but you don't give the cars to people, is that right? Or how do, how do, how does that process work?
We actually sell the cars to program participants for a cost of $500. And we do have some requirements on our end. Our requirements are that each participant has employment, that each participant has a valid driver's license, and does not currently own a vehicle. And then, on top of that, a lot of the partner agencies have requirements too, as far as sitting down and making a budget and making a plan for vehicle maintenance fund, as far as amount of time they've been with the agency. So, we leave that to our partner agencies, who know their clients best, to make those determinations about who benefit most from the vehicle.
Didn't I see on the website, you had a Odyssey, and it's $2,900?
Yes. So, there are certain vehicles that are not a good fit for our program, for the $500 vehicle program. And we, we try to recoup as much money as we can from those vehicles to repair the cars that will go into the program. So, there are certain cars that either fall below, or they're far above the program model. So, the Odyssey, which I believe actually sold for $2,400, that was one of those cars. It had pretty high mileage. And we do offer a six-month warranty on the cars that we put into the program. So, we want to be sure it's something that's going to give somebody a long runway. Anything that's sold for public sale, the funds from that sale go directly to our parts and repair fund for putting other cars into the program. The cars that I saw on the list that were proposed look like excellent candidates for program cars. They're about the right mileage, they're about the right year, and they're not cars. If, sometimes we get donated, like, luxury cars, which would be expensive to fix if they broke, and so, we don't put those into the program, because we don't want to put that burden on our participants.
Well, I'm a dealer, okay? And I just don't see how you have different dealers in town that will finance cars for poor people that can, can make it. And they don't have a problem trying to do that, you know, $300 down, and you're on your way. So, these people got to buy insurance. It's just like this Durango that I'm asking to pull out of this deal. It's a Hemi. Now, it's, this is something that a poor person can't afford to drive around, because it's four-wheel driving, probably gets maybe 12 miles to the gallon. And we have a fire department that basically wants it. And I'm, you know, whatever they decide to do, I want to make sure that that vehicle gets pulled out.
Okay. Yeah, I think generally speaking, I think it's important to, to know that when we're looking at cars like that, we do look at that utility aspect. Like, we are definitely looking at gas mileage, and we are also looking at, there are folks who do come into our program who do need things that are more like for work in order to increase their income. So, that is sometimes a consideration, but I understand what you're saying. Makes sense.
My thing is, you know, appreciate what people try to do. But we can't give the county taxpayers money to everybody. That's why, you know, you're not goodwill, you know. People give goodwill clothes, they sell them, they make money. And that's, that's exactly what I see that will happen in this. People don't open businesses not to make something. It don't matter if it's a nonprofit or whatever. They make sure that they cover their help, and, you know, being a dealer, you are. And, you know, it's not cheap being a dealer with the insurance and stuff. I know, because I have to pay it, the bonds and everything else that go with it.
Yeah. And we've actually gotten a lot of support from private individuals, from foundations supporting our model, and that's how we're covering those costs, because we are a nonprofit organization. And all of our, all of our resources are going into our mission, which is that we're trying to fulfill the needs for transportation in western North Carolina.
Well, what I saw, I went by your place and looked.
Yeah.
And you got, you got a fence dividing the lot off, and you got a lot of old cars sitting on opposite side of the fence.
Oh, that's not our lot. So, on the other side of the fence is actually Asheville Wrecker. So, Red used to own the entire, it was a service station that we are in now. And so, we're on one side, we have two garage bays, one bay that we turn into a really strange-looking office, and then, half of it, we sublease to Organic Mechanic Motors. So, everything on the other side of that fence, those are not our cars. Our cars are only the ones that are in front of the orange part of that parking lot.
I saw about five cars down there, period.
I'm sorry?
I saw about four or five cars on your side.
Uh-huh.
Period.
Okay. I think the other thing that happens with the cars is they are put out to partner mechanic shops. Now, we do want to have few cars in our parking lot. That is one of our goals. When we get a car donated, we want to turn it around as fast as possible and put it into a program participant's hands. So, we do use our partner garages, and we often have cars pulled into our bays. We can fit four cars inside our garage, too. So, we're, we're trying to push them through. Sometimes that parking lot gets so full, we can't fit our cars in it to park, just to go to work.
Thanks, Laura. Any other questions? Yes, sir. Go ahead.
The follow-up on Chairman Nunez. So, you, these cars are...
Sorry about that. Follow-up on Chairman Nunez. So, most of these are $500 cars that you see, or all of them, or most of them?
As far, I mean, I haven't, I personally have not seen the cars, and that is not my forte. I've learned a lot about cars since I have worked here, but I am not naturally a car person. But just looking, knowing what has come through in the time that I've been there, and seeing the cars on the list, the mileage and the years look good to me. But, I mean, I can't straight up say that. But our intention is to put them into the program, absolutely.
Yeah. I guess, just follow-up. You had all the percentage of the people that's got these cars, 100 cars. What is estimated time that these cars stay on the road with the... What is estimated time that these cars stay on the road with these families that take them? And are they paid for at that time, or are they on a payment plan, 50 a week, or?
The families who purchase the cars, they pay initially. So they need to submit their $500 payment with their application. So there's sort of, it's sort of a threshold, like, to get, for someone to get that money together to be stable enough to put that money forward. Then there is about a six-week waiting period usually, just based on our waiting list and how quick the donations come in, for us to have somebody who's applied receive or purchase a car. Does that answer your question, or did I miss something?
Yeah, most, I guess $500 is probably the cheap part. The insurance is probably the expensive part. Are you making sure they've got the money to buy the insurance tag?
Absolutely.
And to get on this car?
Absolutely. So they also pay $103 for the tag and title. That's part included in what they need to submit with their application. And then they do work, they always work with their case manager to be sure that it's, they're going to be able to cover the costs like insurance for the car. And we talked to them in our orientation about a car fund, right? So to say, hey, how much can you expect in expenses on this car? Luckily, a lot of the cars that we sell to participants don't have high insurance costs associated with them because they are older cars, and they're all pretty sensible cars, too. So they're not very risky. Yeah, that's what I have to say. I also want to say that, oh, you asked about how long will the cars last? So our goal is for cars to last a participant two years. And that they, you don't often think of a car as an investment because it depreciates. But if the program participant is putting this $500 into the car, and the car is this potential for them to make more money, to have a better standard of life for their family, there's a real benefit. And, you know, there's a real investment in improvement that's happening for them. And so that's real. And so most of our cars go about that two-year distance, and a lot of them go further.
So after that, can they reapply again for that, or is it a one-time?
No, it's a one-time opportunity. Yeah.
And the percentage of them that do upgrade to a better car since their lifestyle has changed?
We don't, I don't have hard numbers on that, but I have stories on that. And I know anecdotes are not data, but, but we very often see that within a year to two years, people are able to go ahead and get themselves a car that is a little newer, that they're, or that's a little larger for if their family's growing.
Okay, well, I mean, I had mixed about it, and I've learned a lot. I wish we had more time to learn. But I would like to go with Commissioner Fryer on pulling the one out, and I can support this program.
Okay, just, I'm sorry, just to clarify, Commissioner Presley, if we take the, the one vehicle out off of the list, then you'd be supportive of the working wheels?
Right here, yes.
Okay, okay. Great. Any other questions or comments?
Sorry, you go ahead.
Just a comment. Thank you so much for taking the time to share this with us. I actually heard about you all from the folks at On Track, who are kind of describing how they are pairing this program with a matched savings program they offer, that offers sort of financial literacy skills, but also helps people build that kind of safety net that if you're not born into a family that has those kind of resources, or parents who can give you a car, which many, many folks in our community are not, is really helping people kind of get a leg up. So part of what is so compelling to me about this, this approach you all are taking, and specifically the ways you're partnering with and collaborating with some other nonprofits, is that it's such a logical, practical solution to a problem we hear about all the time. I've lost count of the number of stories I've heard of folks who are saying, I'm taking, I'm spending three to four hours of my day trying to get to work. Or high school students who are trying to get to an after-school job to save money for college. And unless we're going to significantly expand the public transportation system, which is something I'd like to see us do over the long term, it feels like helping people access the, the tool they need to, to get around our community, it just makes so much sense. And, and there's something very appealing about thinking about that. I, I think about this, or what's on the table at least, which I'm excited we're talking about, you know, as, as sort of in the same broad school of, of the county assessing all the buildings and land we have, and thinking about, are there ways that some of the county's assets can be used towards public purposes that serve residents of Buncombe County, and especially those folks who are in need? So I'm excited we're having this conversation. I do have one sort of point of clarification that's a question to fellow commissioners or staff, which is just sort of how these, how the resolutions before us speak to each other, and what kind of, through, through what mechanism, and forgive me if I've just missed it, would a local nonprofit or fire department come to the county and say, hey, we'd like a donation, versus having a chance to bid on something at fair market value? And that's a, I'd like us to sort of think this through on a systems level, so that if we are going to open up that donation process, which I'd be in favor of, we just have a clear way through which that could happen. So if, you know, if there's another fire department in the future looking for a donation, there'd be clear...
Send emails in.
Well, that's probably how it's happening right now. I think maybe, I'd like to talk about other ways we could do that. So is that addressed in the...
So can I, can I make a, just to help, probably, she's probably okay to sit down when you say...
Yeah, Laura, thanks so much. Great job. Thanks for telling us more about what y'all are doing.
Appreciate your time.
We might, we might be here for a while.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Mr. Belcher.
So, let me try to talk through this, okay? I, I think that they're, what they're doing is very compelling, sounds, sounds, sounds reasonable. The thing I'm struggling with is that, you know, you know, I'm looking at a policy, and it's the first time I've seen it, was when it was dropped on the agenda. I have a problem with that. I, I don't have, what I, what I like is we're having a good discussion about it. And so I'm going to ask our attorneys, can we, can we deal with this one resolution that says, okay, we, we want to, we got two resolutions, okay? The one that says, what's the fire department that has the resolution?
French Broad.
Okay. French, French Broad. Okay, so we can deal with that, right? Without changing policy?
Yes.
We can deal with that. Okay, so my question is, can we deal with this resolution, there, and pull out, and make a motion, and pull out the Durango to Broad River tonight, and go ahead and gift these others to the, to them tonight, without changing that policy? I, I think we need to talk through that. I mean, there's, there's some holes in that, and I don't see us, I don't see us doing that tonight. I'm not going to vote for that policy. Now, I would vote for what I just said, said. I would vote to give these, except for the Durango, to this nonprofit. Because, I mean, I'll just tell you, the first thing I think, and I looked at the Ford van there, I know some churches that would love to be, have a shot at that van. Not that yours is not a great organization, you know, and, and could use that. But I know, you know, some children's ministries, I know some, some schools that would, you know, that after-school in some poor neighborhoods that could use that van. And so I think we're going to have to be very careful that we're not, okay, somebody raises their hand, and now we're going to give them four vehicles. No reflection on you. I like, I like what you're saying, I like what you're doing. So...
So Commissioner, there's only a few resolutions you do have to act on tonight. First, we have to declare the item surplus. So that's one that you do have to act on. The next two, one to French Broad. That is clearly, you can do that.
Right.
The next resolution, the working wheels minus the Durango, you can also act on those. So there's three of the four you can act on tonight, which we first declare surplus, then French Broad, and then working wheels minus the Durango. If you do authorize the Durango to go to French, Broad River, we would need to post that and then bring that back next time for you to give that to Broad River.
But can, but can we deal with, we can go ahead and deal with...
Working wheels, French Broad, and minus the Durango to go to Broad River the next meeting.
Then we have discussion, ongoing discussion about that policy.
On the overall policy, to answer the questions you're answering today, how do we deal with nonprofits? There is no process right now, yes.
So that's kind of where, I'm just kind of saying that's kind of where I'm at.
Yes.
Okay. I like that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in a similar boat. I know you're going to be surprised, Commissioner Belcher, to hear me say I agree with you.
Yeah, I'm cool with that.
But I want to really ensure that we are looking at this through a, you know, an equitable, transparent view. My concern is, we've said, I almost feel like we're talking out of both sides of our mouth. We've said we want to put it out to fair market value for nonprofits, but we're also offering to donate them tonight. And again, really love what you're doing with working wheels. But how do nonprofits know when they can go purchase them, or when is it better to sit back and wait for the donation, or come to us for a donation? So I just want to be really clear that we have a transparent process to be fair to all nonprofits.
So let me comment on that before I forget it. Okay, so your thinking is where my thinking is now. However, and just for, for the record, I did not put this on, on the agenda. However, working wheels has been put in a difficult situation here this evening. You've come in, you've, you, you know, you poured out your mission. I think it's okay to allow these others to go and be used in that, in that fashion, but deal with your question, Commissioner, later, and I'm going to start.
I, I like, I'll, I'll comment on it. And, you know, I personally, I'm, I'm open to the idea of giving the nonprofits the ability to buy the vehicles at fair market value, kind of giving them first shot. I don't see a lot of downsides to that. It is a little bit of work, you know, to do it, but it seems like it could do some good. I, I personally, at this point, I would probably not be supportive of a broader policy that would contemplate us doing vehicle donations to a lot of different nonprofit organizations because there's so many. And, and I, I think, I think what makes working wheels different is that their purpose isn't to have these vehicles for their own organization's purposes. Their mission is to get these vehicles to people who really need them. So it's, it's kind of different than the idea of, like, let's, let's donate some to, you know, any of the other many organizations that themselves would use it for their staff or something like that. So that's just kind of where I'm at on it. But I think it's a good question, and we do want to be, you know, we do want to be kind of clear about what messages or intentions are we sending. So that's kind of my, my thoughts on it.
So I don't, I don't want to send the signal that the county is, is, is the source of vehicles for working wheels either tonight. What we're doing tonight is a one-time thing, you know, we're, which looks like...
Because it's not on, okay? So what, what I, what I want to make sure of is that tonight, we're, you know, this is not a, you know, we're not going to give all of our vehicles to working wheels, and I know it's not that. I don't want to try to send that signal. I just think that in, in fairness and in response to your presentation, which is good, that those, pulling that one out and doing the other four is probably okay.
I will, I'll make a motion that we approve the, the, the list, first we need to, first we need to approve the Exhibit A, the list of surplus vehicles. So I'll make that motion, and we, we want to take the Durango off that list. Or do we want to have it on the list, and then we'll approve it's next, next meeting?
We got to prove the whole list.
Okay. So I'll make a motion that we approve the list.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. And we'll go and take public comment, and if you, if anybody wants to comment on any of these issues we've been talking about, we would welcome that now. Mr. Yeldon.
I think you need a policy. And based on what I've heard tonight, you always could talk all night on something that didn't mean any sense. I've gone by working wheels, and there was a Jeep sitting out there that sat there several weeks, and I saw it in Weaverville, and somebody bought it. Working wheels has already told you tonight that they sell cars that don't fit their need. So they've got a way to make profit, okay? They're a nonprofit, but they have to make profit to pay their salaries, all right? So that's, that's a fact. You need a policy, and the policy should state that fair market value, if a car's valued for sale at $500 on there, Mike, what's it going to be worth as surplus? $250, $300? So you put it on your list at that price. And that list is open to anybody that wants to bid on it, including working wheels, because they have a source of generating more income. Also, they get donations. So they bid on that list if they see something they want that fits their program. Secondly, if anybody that is an organization of Buncombe County, that's important now, Buncombe County sees a vehicle on there that they can use and turn into value for them, should come right here and say to this board, I'd like to have this vehicle donated to me, and here is why. And number three or four, whichever it is, all nonprofits should open their books to this board, if this board supports them. I would like to know how many cars they sold in a profit last year. Don't know why, I don't, I'm not going to ask how much profit they made, but I want to know how many they sold for a profit. I want to know how many they donated. I want to know how many that they didn't get paid for. Because if you're going to support a program like this and give them the vehicles tonight, you need to know what they're doing with them. That's why you've got to go back and establish a simple policy, folks. You put it on the list, nonprofits can bid on it, and if a nonprofit wants to, let them make a presentation to you. A policy that avoids what you're doing tonight. You bring up a topic, and you spend, you've spent all these innuendos and arrows and changes, and everybody does all of this. Make it simple.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Rice.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Members, Board. I hope we have this bigger discussion when we have the bigger nonprofits and their money. These are little items here. I think I follow up on Mike's concern about the fire departments. I think we need the policy to read that they get the first priority. When we're dealing with safety, health, and welfare of the community, think about that first. If they're coming to get me, or coming to see about a fire at my house or something, I'd like for them to have a good vehicle. If these are good enough to do that, they ought to have priority above any profit, nonprofit, or profit, period. So that needs, I think, to go in the policy.
All right, thanks, Jerry. Anyone else? All right. So come back to the motion, which is to approve the list of surplus property described in Exhibit A. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any post? All right. I'll make a resolution to... Yes, sir?
I'm trying to just, so you don't want to, we're putting them out for...
In here, you...
We're just putting this out for, to be put out, right?
For surplus.
I don't understand why you're against it.
Well, I'll go against it. I'll change my vote.
Okay.
All right. We'll reflect it with unanimous.
I apologize.
No problem. Thanks for clarifying that. Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution of intent to donate the surplus personal property to working wheels minus the Durango, with a stipulation that all the vehicles must go to people of Buncombe County. And also, I'd like to have, have a stipulation that these must be used for surplus, for program vehicles, not to just simply be resold.
Second.
And if, so, right. All right, just motion and a second.
Not to be resold.
So we don't want these to just be resold. We actually want these to be the program cars, and if, anyway, so that's...
So, yes.
All right.
So this is one-time deal right here.
This is just a one-time deal. You know, my, and what I would hope is that, and that's all it is, that's all we're voting on. My hope is that maybe in, you know, maybe in nine to 12 months, we could get an update from working wheels, kind of hear how it went, see where things are going. And there's no commitment that we're going to do this again, but, you know, it might be something, as we evaluate the results of this, maybe we decide, hey, we should take, you know, a small percentage of our surplus vehicles each year and continue the partnership. So I'd say, let's, let's do an evaluation and see where we're at, and go from there.
So I'll just say, because I, I know we don't want to be here all night, so I'm going to say that that's not where I'm at. I'm, I'm with the, with the motion, but I don't want to send a signal to the working wheels that this is an ongoing relationship, because there's so many other great, you know, places out there that, that, that we might have an opportunity, so. But, but I respect the chairman's position on where, where you're at on it. I just don't want to send that signal tonight. But I think the, the way you did the motion is, is, I don't think anything, anything was left out, and I, I may have hurriedly seconded that, so I just want to make sure...
There's no commitments... There's no commitments beyond what's on the agenda tonight. So we can, you know, if the majority wants to explore it...
I didn't take that. It's just the other comments I want to make sure of.
I do have one quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
So if these vehicles cannot be used in the program, they will be returned to Buncombe?
They would return them to Buncombe County.
I just wanted to make sure that was part of the conversation.
That's right.
Yes. And also, I want to let you know, I want to, I'm going to follow up and support this. But I guess my concern is affordable housing, we just give away two points-up million for 20 years down the road. Working on early childcare. I just want it to be known, we're probably only messing with $2,000 or $3,000 here. So this is not millions we're going to get, and that's why I'm supporting it. But I want further discussion before we go any further.
Right.
Good thoughts. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Can we plan on putting the, why don't we put the French Broad, can we put that on the consent agenda for our next meeting?
We can vote, no, we can vote on that.
Do French Broad, Broad River, we can consent.
The Broad River. So we can do French Broad now?
Yeah.
Okay, let's go ahead and do that one then. You want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. So my only comment on this, I'm for it. I just kind of like with the questions with, you know, other organizations. I mean, I guess the only struggle I have on this, I'm going to vote for it anyway, is just, what is our policy? Are we going to do, are we going to do this, more of this in the future? How do we, you know, so I just, we're not going to resolve all that tonight. I'm just kind of saying out loud, I think we still don't really have a policy. I think this is a good thing, but we probably, we probably need to think that through and just decide, you know, if we're going to do a certain number of vehicles this way a year, and what that is and what the process is. Because I just don't think, kind of just saying yes to some people and no to others is the right place to be in the future.
Well, they haven't, honestly, they haven't asked for anything in a long time. Neither one of them, you know? And so, you know, what we're doing with them, 2008 vehicles, it's going to be a benefit to both of them, Broad River and this one, so.
And I think the other thing, too, we probably wouldn't even be doing that if this other hadn't been brought before. So I think the emphasis tonight is we got to do good policy, and we'll move forward on that, so.
All in...
Just a quick, are these the only active requests we're aware of from fire departments?
Yeah, I was aware of the one, and he brought the other one forward.
Okay. So we'll just continue to assess them?
Yeah. Maybe it's not an issue. When we took public comment, I asked for public comment on all of these. So I consider that to be done.
All right.
All right, all in favor of the resolution of intent regarding French Broad fire?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Do, does anybody want to make a motion on the other one? Or are we going to just kind of let that, kind of think about that some more and...
If we can, if we can do it, I'll make...
Can't today.
You can. It requires five days posted notice prior to the resolution, so they could go on the next...
The French Broad does.
Oh, I'm talking about the first, the first one, the policy...
That's the one you said you're not, we need to go back and work on that.
No, no.
But you guys can give me some direction of what you want to see in there.
I'm fine, I'm fine in leaving it alone right now.
Yeah, I don't...
All right, well, I'll just ask this. Does anybody else have anything else they want to say on this agenda? All right. If not, then thank you all for the good discussion. All right. We come to board appointments. I don't think we have any, do we? All right. And we now come to public comment. So any members of the public are invited to comment. You have up to three minutes to let us know your name and where you live. And Dave Nutter will go first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am David Nutter. I am a city and county planner. I live on Flint Street in the Monford Historic District in the heart of our county. I deeply believe in community planning in the sense of active advisory subcommittees, boards, and commissions for recreation, parks, greenways, and trails. I'm a member of the city's Greenway Committee and of Connect Buncombe, committed to county greenways. Like so many others, I have invested weeks and months advocating and planning for greenways to serve all our people with linear parks, recreation and health, pedestrian and bicycle transportation, neighborhood well-being, and county economic development. By all the people, I mean rich and poor, black and white, young and old, progressive or conservative, or east or west. We advocate for the Woodfin Greenway and Blue Way, for the Anka Candler Sports Park, for Black Mountain, all of which are moving forward now, and for new greenways along Reams Creek, Lake Julian, and the French Broad and Swananoa Rivers. We desire to continue the success the county has had in implementing the Buncombe County Greenways and Trails Master Plan, approved unanimously by your body in 2012. We suggest a distinct and separate Greenways and Trails Commission or Subcommittee would be best, but we are willing to work with you on a combined greenways and trails and parks and recreation body. The essential functions would be inclusion of diverse county representatives, focusing on clear priorities, strong assistance to county staff, and help with funding and coordination. We look forward to working with you, staff, and commission over the next month on all of these matters. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak to you.
All right, thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Marcia Bromberg, and I live in West Asheville. West is best. And I'm a strong advocate of greenways. And I want to begin by thanking you for considering establishment of a Recreation and Greenways Advisory Board. However, I'm going to argue for a separate Greenway Advisory Board. First, a little history. I was a member of the Buncombe County Greenway Commission between 2008 and 2012. That commission was comprised of representatives from the county municipalities who were involved with greenways, members of interest groups, including biking, hiking, and the environment, as well as interested-at-large citizens. With our focus on greenways and our broad reach into the community, we oversaw several greenway feasibility studies, and most importantly, oversaw the development of the Greenways and Trails Master Plan, which was approved by the county commissioners in 2012. The Buncombe County Greenway Commission reported to the county commissioners through the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. That board's focus was parks and recreation. Ours was greenways. When I served on the Asheville Greenway Commission, I learned the value of that separation. It wasn't until that commission, which is now a committee, was moved under the Transportation Department, that real progress was made in greenway planning, funding, and development. Of course, we don't have a transportation body in the county, but I still argue that greenways need a separate board to ensure the master plan remains a focus of the county. Unlike recreation, which has parents, coaches, and sports teams, greenways do not have an obvious constituency. Yet through surveys, personal contact, and observed use of greenways, it's clear citizens want greenways and will use them. I would hate for the voice of advocates such as myself to be lost in the conversation of how sports teams can be best accommodated, or what investment should be made in equipment. And that leads me to one last comment about greenways. Earlier today, I heard commissioners' concerns about the need to make recreation options available to all segments of the community. The Greenway Master Plan does just that with its 100-plus miles of greenways reaching across our county. And greenways are the ultimate equalizer. Anyone can use them, old, young, fit, not-so-fit, black, white, brown. You don't need to be part of a team. You don't need to have special equipment. All you need to do is show up. Since the Greenway Commission was disbanded, dedicated citizens have continued to work towards implementation of the master plan, educating citizens, raising funds for greenways planning, and advocating for greenways. But without a formal connection with county commissioners and staff, we have often felt ignored and frustrated. A dedicated Greenway Advisory Board will help restore our partnership with the county and help us work together towards our mutual goal of implementing the Greenways and Trails Master Plan. I hope you will consider this proposal. Thank you.
All right. Good timing.
Practice that.
My name is Ann Babcock, and I, too, have been a greenway advocate for many years. And I am so happy that you, the county commissioners, are addressing the need for a parks, or a recreation, or a greenway advisory board. Most counties in North Carolina, the size of Buncombe County, have either a recreation board, or a greenway board, or both. We have neither. And I would recommend both. My reason is that a Recreation Services Advisory Board has a very different scope and goal. It includes swimming pool management, soccer field maintenance, playgrounds, and recreation programming, all of which the county does well. But these programs have a different constituency. Greenway use is more passive and unstructured, more related to parks and open space. Greenway advocacy would be lost in the discussions, and the board, as proposed in the document that just came out, would not be an efficient way to be heard. If two different boards is not an option at this time, then a new proposal should include a mission statement that respects the countywide desire for off-road pedestrian and bicycle paths, and greenway advocates should be included in the board makeup. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Rice.
You know where that is?
Yeah.
Last week, there's a little healthy discussion on a public hearing that I wanted to speak about, so I want you to listen to what I'm saying. A public hearing is public hearing. It's not a public comment. When you have a public hearing and you have someone like me or anyone else that brings up something, you need to discuss it and ask why, or ask the questions that the person is coming up for the hearing about. A public hearing is to get information and give information. It's not a one-way street, especially when you vote for it afterwards. So you need to get a little education on the difference. And when I come up and speak on the public comment afterwards and then get shut down, then I go back to the back of the room, and here comes the attorney, here comes the other person that presented, and they liked my information because they hadn't heard some of it before. So that tells me something, that I was on the right track on some of what I was saying. So, Mr. Chairman, I think you need to consider that in your thoughts next time. And any one of you, not just the chairman, you need to speak up. The chairman don't have to say it all. Shut him down if he's wrong. How about that? I want the voters to hear what's being said. So in the pre-meeting, instead of having it in the middle of the day, lunchtime, at convenience for you and your staff, have it when the reasonable people can hear what's going on, not on a YouTube video hours later. How can you, I can't even do it myself. I'm retired, and I can't even do it. So you need to have it closer to the meeting time, have a 30-minute break, and have it televised up here in this room where your staff can come up here and talk, where it can be televised. And if you can see it at home, see it at home, like you do this meeting right here. Do it for the voters, not for your staff. You pay the staff to do it. So I hope you consider that. And I'd like to have that public comment, whatever you said that I couldn't say anymore about, I'd like to have that in writing, sent to me. I want to see where that is. And, you know, I would vote, ask you to vote to change that, because public comment ought to be anything you want to talk about, whether it's been said before or not. You might learn a little something if you'd be open to listening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Anyone else? Mr. Yeldon?
I've been watching this board for 20 years. Seen people come, seen people go. Seen people get arrested, seen people go into jail. And I've asked from day one, any nonprofit this board deals with should have open books to the county, period. End of discussion. Going to reiterate that. Number two, you've got to have goals set, and you've got to have those goals calculated. But the most frustrating thing about everything in those 20 years, yeah, we finally got the checks on the internet, yeah, we finally got one-stop shopping down there. Several things that I have brought up and raised cane about, and one of them I understand is still being worked on, how much a library costs. They don't know what each library costs. They didn't even keep up with the maintenance that's going out there and have a maintenance slip. Folks, if you ran a business like that, and Mike, you're in business, you'd be broke the first year. Also, when you come up here and you give the information, like Jerry did that day, that I didn't know and anybody else didn't know, and you get shut down, and you're sitting up there looking at the ceiling and thinking, God, I wish they'd shut up. I wish there'd be somebody up here besides Jerry and Don talking. And what you do when you have an item on the agenda that you want to promote, there's some of you will pack this place you get on the phone. But when somebody's been here, born and raised in this county, and cares about the taxpayer, 2.2 million Swananoa, 2 million Eagle Street, free cars to wheels and deals, remember I told you, folks, they're going to come in here with the greatest deal in the world. It's going to solve humanitarian problems. It's going to solve energy, build a lot of parks and let everybody run on them, and the world's going to be happy, and Buncombe's going to bring in all kinds of tourists. And you folks swallow it, hook, line, and sinker. You're going to have to grow some, because, folks, you're running out of taxpayers. Nonprofits don't pay taxes. Those cars originally donated, somebody didn't pay taxes. Solar energy is a tax reduction. It's not a generation of money. And when you run out of taxes, what did Margaret Mead say? Sooner or later, you're going to run out of OPM, which business schools teach, other people's money. Sooner or later, you run out of it.
All right. Thanks, John. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
My name is Tom Van Slambrook, Chairman and Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I do want to just kind of touch on what Mr. Rice talked about, the pre-meetings. I'm not a fan of those. I don't think that we should be having those, or you should be having those. I think that what we need to do is bring everything back here into the meetings like we normally did in the past, like we've always done, and have some of the conversations. I enjoy listening to what every one of you have to say in these meetings. There's a lot of us here. A lot of us can't always be here, and a lot of people that are sitting at home that are voters, that need to know everything that's going on. And this gives us an opportunity to hear what is said, the counter-conversations that we have, where everybody has their own opinions. I think those are important for everybody to hear, and those people that need to be informed. I know that you're not wanting to spend all night here, and I respect that, because you guys spend a lot of time out there already. But please consider doing away with that pre-meeting and bringing everything back here, and let's have the conversation, and so everybody can hear what you have to say, and any counter-arguments that you might have. So, thank you, and I appreciate the time. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? All right, well, thank you all for your feedback. We appreciate your attendance at the meeting this evening. I think we've got just a couple of announcements. On May 7th at noon, the county commissioners will have their pre-meeting at 200 College Street, first-floor conference room in downtown Asheville. And then at 5:00 that evening, we'll have our regular meeting. You know, I just, since I'm making an announcement about a pre-meeting, you know, I would like to just comment that I think the, and we're always open to, you know, hearing new ideas about... know, hearing new ideas about how to do this best. But I think the pre-meetings actually put way more information out in the public's eye than what we've ever had before, because basically, the process of planning these agendas before these pre-meetings were set up was that it all happened behind closed doors. People would meet in small groups, so you don't violate the open meetings laws, and they would meet with our county manager and discuss what's on the agenda. Now, all of that is done in an open, public meeting. So definitely open to hearing other ideas about how to get this best, but I think it's a major step towards putting all of this out in the open end, doing everything we can to basically, you know, figure things out in small groups by not triggering open, public meeting requirements. So I just wanted to just share a couple of thoughts on that. If there's no other business, we are adjourned. Thanks again for being here.